This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:02 PM on Thursday, October 28th, 2021. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
You.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Love-Lady.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here. Ledge allegiance. Love lady, if you live on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Worden Park Playground. So, the equipment, the playground equipment is arriving next week. We were unable to delay the shipment as the company doesn't have a place to store it either. So, we're going to be putting it in the city shop for the short term until the site is ready. And there's some more updates for Worden later on in the meeting. Just gonna be.
Yeah.
It kind of has to be, right?
I hear there's a 14-foot pallet, so. John will have a surprise when he gets back next week. Oh, item number two, Lewis County Housing Policy Summit. It was rescheduled to December 2nd from 9:01. The location has not yet been selected. And the Lewis County Legislative Roundtable is going to be November 30th from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Historic Courthouse. And all the council folks should have gotten. There's a Zoom link to that too, so you can attend remotely. Council reports.
Couple questions. I was wondering about our tractor.
Tractor, yeah. So, I get ahold of Kubota dealer twice, or twice a month, and they're just waiting. They just, they haven't gotten any tractors. And so, even though we've ordered ours, they, they haven't gotten their distribution from the manufacturer.
And as of four hours ago, three hours ago, they're hoping December. I was just down there getting a part.
Oh, you're up there.
And I'm like, where's our tractor, by the way? We're hoping for December.
Yeah, they, they said they hoped for October, and then they hoped for whatever.
And they are moving also.
I noticed that they're.
So, they're now on the west side of the highway. What's that?
They're gonna be across the freeway by the John Deere.
Yeah.
And the New Holland.
Another, another question. We talked this last spring about the stormwater drain that ran by the bridge. We were gonna dig that up and repair the thermal pipe.
This'll be the one in front of the mini storage?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know John and Lauren went down there and took a look at it. I'll talk to John next week when he gets back about exactly what happened with that.
And I know last week you guys talked about Annanen Road.
Annanen Road. So, we did. This week, we got back the first batch of 1,000 pages from the county. They said they have 3,000 documents they're going to be, they're sending us for about Annanen Road. We got 1,000 pages.
And I think I remember in the past, the road went from the county to the city, back to the railroad, back to the county. It's been kind of powerful around. But I was wondering if anybody had mentioned maybe, since it's, it's a, it's a problem.
How about?
Maybe had contacted the Callis Tribe. They're always looking for projects that would benefit the community.
Okay.
That, and I had one person from the Callis Tribe wanna like gravel it for us, but I was like, well, we have to kind of contact them and them. And they're like, no, I just, what about this river in the town goes to gravel? I'm like. You know, so she's from the Callis Tribe, and I know.
Yeah.
I wouldn't tell anybody, but I haven't seen anything yet. But I thought that might be a good kind of a question to go towards for.
Okay. Well, let me read a little summary about Annanen Road.
Not 1,000 pages, please. Yeah.
A summary. So, I went through the first 1,000 pages, and I put together kind of a timeline. And this is short. It took me a couple minutes to read this, so. "The first section of Walter Annanen Road was established in 1940 by the county. It was only a fraction of the size of the road that we have now. This would be the farthest north section running west to east from Winlock, Vader, to the railroad tracks. So, it's before it makes the bend and heads south." So, that was an official county road, Walter Annanen Road. "In 1954, the old log bridge that was existing over the creek on Walter Annanen Road was in such disrepair that the county needed to close it for replacement. The county reached out to the railroad for an easement to maintain the private road that ran north to south from Highway 506 north to Walter Annanen Road." So, that would be the other section of Annanen that we know today. It was a private road. The county said, hey, railroad, can we use this? "This was to allow residents access to their homes while the log bridge on the north side was being replaced with the metal bridge. The county was issued that easement, and they proceeded to replace the log bridge with a metal bridge. The county never released that easement after the bridge work. Then at some point in the 1980s, the county seemed to have stopped taking care of the road. And then in 1988, the then mayor of Vader, I think it's Chastain, pushed the county to fix the road. There was a big push by the county to vacate the stretch of Annanen Road inside the city limits. So, county kind of pushed back and said, whoa, 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 we don't want to fix this road anymore." There was a huge public outcry with public hearings and a signature campaign, all kinds of stuff. They had the fire district, fire department, everything reach out and say, hey, we need this, we need this stretch of road. You can't, you can't vacate it. The county, because of all this, the county denied vacation proposal, as the road was very important to the local area and needed for the property emergency access. So, after that happened, the county then proceeded to start taking care of the road again. They got easements from local property owners so that they could improve the stormwater drainage from the east side to the west side of the road. So, we've got a couple different documents getting easements so they could do this. They did that up till about 1993. And then in 1994, it seems that there were some county managers that started pushing back again on the maintenance of the road. And then in the early 2000s, the county then proceeded to take action to replace that old metal bridge that was replaced in 54 with the current concrete one that's there now. Let's see. And so, here we are again. And now the county is again, we've got pushed back from the county managers, again, saying that, you know, they're referring back to that original easement. The actual quote was, "The agreement that you referenced was for the sole purpose of providing access to residents cut off from the county road system because of weight restrictions of subsequent bridge replacements over the Oloqua Creek on the county's Annanen Road during that time. With all the intended improvements long ago completed, the county has no further interest in the permit. The intent has been fulfilled. The letter that was sent to you was only to show the county's intent regarding the permit." He also explains that the camp, the road in question is within the corporate limits of Vader and has never been established as a county road. "County road funds are collected in the unincorporated area of the county by statute are intended to be used in repair, maintain, and improve roads in the unincorporated area of the county." So, the county is under the impression that we are to take care of that section of the road that's within the city limits of Vader. However, that's, that burning to northern agreement is still in existence. So, do they have a legal obligation to repair it? So, we're still working on getting the rest of the documents and what that would entail, but, you know. So, that's the history of the road that I had put together. Some neat things that were in there. In those public records requests, we had the, the signatures from people from 1988. The big signature, signature campaign, the public hearing, all the stuff. It was pretty cool.
So, can?
So, could we, could we dump a bunch of money on it right now? We probably could, and no one would tell us not to.
Can we get the easement?
Exactly.
Can we get the easement from the county signed over to us?
I think the county would absolutely. Probably wouldn't even need to do anything other than them just write a memorandum of understanding that, that they do absolutely believe that it's our, that it's our road already. That would be the end of it. But there are some more documents coming. Like I said, this was the first batch of three. So, who knows what else, what else is in there? So. So, that was the Annanen Road update. But there's some cool stuff out.
One more thing. I don't know. Two, two years ago, we talked about taking down these juniper trees, bush line over here across the street. And now that we have the part-time guy for a little while longer, how long has it been?
He, no, his, his, the weeks that we had budgeted are exhausted now. So, it's, that's done. However, in the budget for next year, we do have a full year part-time employee budgeted to help John two days a week.
I didn't know if we were gonna extend that for the rest of the year with this kid, or?
We didn't have a budgeted, and so.
Well, since our tractor's not gonna be here for another month and a half.
It said that it'll be here tomorrow.
Okay, that's just, just something that I, it hit me when I got on the tractor. It was, things stink. They've been there forever. It's ugly.
Anti-juniper.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, that's all I got.
Okay, good questions. Further council reports and/or questions. Moving on to agenda approval. I do have one item to add. We did have a public hearing on revenue and property tax advertised and scheduled today. So, that actually needs to be added as item number one.
We already have an item number one.
Well, I remember.
Point five.
We need to have it before we talk about, we should have it before we, before item number two, so.
Point five?
Whatever works. Zero.
I'd like to think of the motion that we approve the city council meeting for 10/28/2021 with the addition of public hearing. Number one.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the agenda with the addition of the public hearing on revenue and property tax. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Love-Lady. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for 10/14/2021.
The motion by Ms. Love-Lady to approve the city council meeting minutes for October 14th. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Secuted by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve vouchers for last half of October 2021 for $598,331.08. And for October 2021 total for $666,689.08.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Love-Lady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, Parks Board.
Hello. I wish I just newly re-elected Park Board Chair, and at our elections, Ken Jessland got re-elected as our Park Board Vice Chair. One thing for us to.
Congratulations.
Remember, right, there was a whole lot of not me, not me, not me, not me.
I wasn't fast enough.
I didn't even go there. I was just.
So, um. Updates. So, Worden Park, you already heard, the playground equipment is scheduled to be showing up next week sometime between the first and the third. So, if that's both, that's exciting, and it'll be adventurous to see what that, how that whole storing arrangement's gonna go. Today, we had some new good news from RCO. We did receive official tribal approval from, from them to be able to, for RCO to be able to give us our, what did I call it again? It was our letter of.
Notice to proceed.
Notice to proceed. Thank you. Um, so hopefully, I know they usually don't work on Fridays, so hopefully next week, but it's state, so. Could be one to two weeks. We could be getting that, and as soon as that happens, then we can go ahead and start getting the contractor set up, ready to go, and start excavating and, and putting in our new sidewalks and stuff, and they can start selling the playground equipment, which is really exciting. And also down at Worden Park and in front of the hall here too, they've also part of the Worden Park project are the banners and signs letting everybody know that the project is happening and what kind of changes and things they can see, expect to see coming over there. McMurphy, they gave us that block for the winter. It is open for foot traffic. We did have an event where apparently somebody was driving around in the creek down there. They're doing all kinds of wheelies and stuff.
Yeah, there's, there's like a driveway that goes, lets them go down.
Yeah, over by the port-a-dies.
Yes.
Yeah, so they were going down there and then driving up and around and doing all kinds of great fun things there. So, we met up with John, and I believe Mo is gonna be going down there, and she has posts and everything. We're gonna put up a couple of posts, and John has a chain, and kind of just make it, it's not gonna stop anybody, but it can help slow them down at the very least. And he also has a few trees down there that he's gonna be chopping up or topping down here soon, because they're getting, they're, they're dying about to fall into our safety hazard. But over on the left side of the park in particular, where the campfire pits are, there's one there, and he's planning on kind of situating them such so that it'll block off another drive where people like to go in and drive back and forth along where the fire pits are. He's gonna make that kind of like a circular seating area for on the logs, like what we have. So, kind of like a duplicate of that as well. Um, oh, let's see, that was the poles. Chips for trails. We had our chipping event happen this month. We had, it was really, it was a lot of extra work, but quite, quite a few adventures happened on that as well, but it overall was a success. We served approximately 20 customers over the course of three days. Two of those days were in-town pickup, the other day, the day of the event itself, when we had the chipping. We had probably, I think she said about 12 customers show up, and we had from Naperville, Chehalis, Winlock, and Toledo. We estimate that we probably had about 150 cubic yards of blim show up and were able to chip about 15 cubic yards of chip to spread on some of the new trails that have been going in and connecting, because we're trying to make a, like a loop on one side of the park. Let's see. And tying into that, we've been working on creating a calendar of events. And we, we're, that was all, oh, by the way, that was all grant paid through Lewis County, solid waste and utility to end the toll bill, because we had, we didn't have, had volunteers on the day of chipping. They had to bring in more people, and so it was about a $1,600 event, and the county is paying for that for us. So, which was really exciting. And they said that they would like to help us out doing it. We want to do this yearly. They want to put us on that, that grant cycle with them as well. So, we are looking at another chipping event on April 30th, potentially. These are alternative dates. We're looking at April 30th, doing a pickup on the 26th and 27th, which is a Tuesday and Wednesday. If that is also offered through, if the county pays for it and everything again. The date of the chipping on Saturday, it will be open to everybody in Lewis County again as well. I hope we were able to do this last time. And we're hoping to have more, have more volunteers too. We're also gonna have what we're calling a Days to Trail Place. So, we're gonna be having between three to five days, tentatively, where we go through, try to get some volunteers, so down in McMurphy Park. When I get these locked in on times and everything, we'll definitely announce them like on the board, website, newsletter, newspaper, wherever we can, flyers, and it'll be, everyone coming to McMurphy Park and helping clear out and connect the rest of these trails, the rest of the trail system, we're trying to do all prior to the chipping event so that it can all get chipped and spread back onto the trail itself. Right now, we have a November 13th, 2021, January 8th, 2022, February 19th, March 12th, and April 23rd is our technical date for that. And then for another event, we're looking at adding in through the Lewis County Solid Waste of Utility program. They have, they will pay for three hours of a truck to come down to do sensitive document shredding. And we are looking at doing that on, that was in May, either the 12th or the 21st of May, depending on what the timeframe of what. We know that they'll let us do three hours, but we don't know if it's, you know, up until 4 o'clock. We were hoping if we do it on Thursday, then it would also be a day of city council day, and people can bring up to three paper bags or three paper bags, sizes of boxes of sensitive documents in that they can have shredded for free. Anyone that comes to the hall for the council meeting, then maybe they can do a drop-off if the truck will come back, but if not, then we're gonna do a tentative, temporary difference from the first. We haven't decided the, the location either. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how big the truck is. I don't know what kind of. It's not like they pull it up. I don't know if they have to pop up or anything, but I would love ideally for. Yeah, also maybe like there's a park to be the gravel log over here if it's too big. But I had to change the bar. Oh, come over there? Okay. But, um, yeah, so we're still getting more details on that as well, though. And I think, and then, no, I think that's actually, I think that's it. So, any questions? Yes, Donna?
Did you catch who tore the park up on that camera we have up down there?
No, not that I'm aware of at least. I, I wasn't, I wasn't told about it until later on by another person to have it happen.
Right, but just the camera on all the time.
Yeah, it is. We need to go look at that. We still haven't.
I don't know if that was something that was talked about.
They tear the park up? You haven't even looked at the camera?
It wasn't, it wasn't torn up.
Or?
No, they didn't actually tear, they didn't tear it up, but they, they were driving in the water.
Driving in the creek and they should.
Yeah, it didn't get really bad with muddy or anything, but if it had been as wet as it is this week, it would have just been a total mudfall. So.
So, is the park actually closed now?
Yeah, the gate is closed now.
And they can't, they can't get any more vehicles in there?
No, no. Yeah, John, John closed and locked the gate before he, before it was gone. And I think that was something John was talking about looking at when he got back too. He needed to go through and review the footage. I do have a date. I'll, I can pull it up and email it to you, Diane.
Okay.
But any other questions? Okay.
You know, I have a suggestion. We, we have that, the float, the May Day float down at the storage unit. And if it'd be easier for John and for you guys, I could pull that thing out of there, have you store that 20-foot pallet in a storage unit, because it's just sitting there with city stuff already in it.
Okay. Because I was gonna nominate Ken Shaw. So, okay. Yeah, I want to see the day of exactly what we are going on. Thank you.
Yeah, and then definitely we'll be showing up the week of November 1st and the 3rd. That's next week.
Yeah, it's next week. It's Monday.
They were thinking Wednesday, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Planning Committee. Scott was unable to be here. He had an issue with his cat. I don't know what that means. No, I think so. But I know the Planning Committee was working on a change to city code that would allow City Hall to take care of some variance requests on setbacks administratively if they were small, instead of having to have the Planning Committee do that quasi judicial hearing, and then it comes to council for a quasi judicial hearing, and then we have different council members that are, that are excusing themselves because of family relations and all kinds of things like that. So, the idea would be that if the, the variance request was small enough, that we wouldn't have to do that, so.
What does small enough mean? Because this is gonna wind up where one person gets to make all the decisions.
I think it was, if it was less than 50% of whatever the maximum setback is, then it could be handled administratively. So, for instance, if the setback was 20 feet from the front of the, from the front road, as long as they weren't asking for more than 10 feet, it wouldn't have to be, it wouldn't have to go to Planning Committee and Council. But it would still be subject to the same, the same kind of criteria that it is now, where, you know, it wouldn't have to unduly impact the neighbors, and it wouldn't have.
It was 50%. I would, I would say.
It was 50%, yeah. So, and so, it would have to still meet the same criteria as it does now. It just wouldn't have to be approved by Planning Committee and Council. But they're working, they're working on it. And eventually, if they get done with it, it'll, it'll come to council for, for your, for your review as well.
Okay, so I'm just curious about, you know, you're just talking about 20 feet, but what if it's a bigger deal and it's like, include 100 feet? So, you're, you're saying you'd only have approval for 50% then, or how does that, how does that work? Because there doesn't seem to be that many, that much restrictions. I'm not real clear on what you're actually trying to do.
For instance, like in a residential, residential setbacks, like if I remember serves, the front yard setback is 20 feet. So, that, the house has to be at least 20 feet or in front. In the back, it has to be at least 15 feet, I believe, and then from the sides, 10 feet. So, as long as they're not requesting for a variance of more than 50% of any one of those numbers.
Okay.
Then it could be. So, if it was, say, a side yard setback, as long as they weren't asking for more than five feet, it could be handled in City Hall. If it was gonna be extra close, it would absolutely have to come to Planning Committee and, and Council. So, that, that's kind of what they're working towards. And then it would eliminate a lot of the need for a lot of those hearings that we've been having to have, so for the small issues. City business. Item number one, the public hearing on revenue and property tax. It's a state requirement as part of the budget season. Would someone like to state the requirements for the public hearing and make a motion to open?
We open the public hearing for attendance or as needed for the revenue and property tax.
The motion by Mr. Daley to open the public hearing as noted. Do we have a second? Secuted by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is open at 6:30 PM for revenue and property taxes. This is a moment, moments for the public to speak on these issues. There will be other, there'll be another public hearing in November. Just one more, two more, two more public hearings in November and another one in December on this. So, plenty of time for people to voice their opinions. Now, there is no one online tonight, so everyone that would like to speak is here in the audience. So, there's two residents in the, in the, that live in the city limits here tonight in the audience. All right, I'll ask again. Is there any other, any comment from the public on the, for the public hearing? All right. Hearing none. This, the public hearing is adjourned at 6:31 PM. All right. Moving on to the next item on city business, councils reallocate the. Uh, councils reallocate the REIT first quarter percent and the REIT second quarter percent budget funds. Since the McMurphy Park installation project for utilities was completed. And would you like to explain this?
Yes, um, I spoke with one of the auditors and currently we can spend that money because that installation's already been done. You can't spend it on anything else. If we anticipate using part of it this year, we need to reallocate it to a different project. And that would be done with a budget amendment, but I'll put it on here so you guys can discuss what kind of project you want to put it to and how you wanna handle that.
So in previous years, if you look back in your budget, it says, um, the REIT funds for many, many years actually have been. Um, set aside for McMurphy Park Utilities Installation. Which partly happened, there was water that was ran down there and things like that, but that project just has. Since completed and there's been, there's no other work needed on it, but it was still lingering in the, in the budget system. Um, and that's how the, these funds were being allocated on the books. So the idea would be just that we. Give them a different name. That's what it is, whether we spend it or not. Now, the council did approve last year ninety four thousand for REIT for. The Worden Park Project for the matching funds, so um. Part of our other REIT that we already have is when is dedicated to that, but this, this would just be for future, future projects. Is that correct?
Or anything that we want to spend out of it. We have to put it into a different bucket.
Whether we spend it or not.
I mean, getting ready for twenty eighteen, twenty two.
So we can use this for capital improvement?
That's what the REIT money is for and you tend to say, hey, I'm just gonna use this money to do whatever. You have to dedicate it. And make sure that you say specifically what you need this for and all that. So that's why we have to be very specific about how we use it, when you name it that. And follow it back.
And there's follow-up reports that have to be provided to the state after you spend it to show, to tell them what you spent it on. Make sure it's a qualified expense.
Okay, so where is the money coming from with the foundation underneath the jail and the roof?
Those were general funds.
Okay, so I.
So the, the REIT money was never, so the REIT is given to, to us on a quarterly basis. Um, and it is a real estate excise tax. So when a home sells in the city, sells in the city, we get a little bit of, we get a little bunny, a little bit of money for that. And obviously recently a lot of homes are selling and so, um, we've gotten more than we actually budgeted for this year for REIT money. But it just sits there until we have a qualified expense that we want to spend it on. Um, and so the idea would be to just generate a new. Line item to say that we're going to spend REIT on, on this, so we could say.
Show in the budget that that money's coming out for the jail.
For the, for the jail.
Did you already take it out for the repairs on the jail, the foundation and the roof?
No, it's still.
Yeah, we used it, yeah. It was, it was a line item in the twenty twenty budget for capital improvement. I can't remember the name of it, but we did have it in the budget. So if it happens this year, I might go that way.
Okay, I just don't see it in this budget.
Um, no.
So it's not gonna carry over?
There's, there's a function that it's gonna be done before next year.
Okay.
But if it is not, certainly we'll add it back. Twenty two, two.
So what we need tonight though is just a. What do we want to say that we're going to allocate REIT money for going forward? We just wanna say park, can we be generic and that it's park improvement? Has to be specific?
Wastewater?
No. Has to be specific. What kind of project are you gonna do it for? No, we don't wanna do it for the wastewater, cause they have their own money.
Oh, yeah. Well, then should we, should we say that it's, originally it was not specified for Worden. Even though council voted to use REIT fund as our matching fund. So we should probably.
We, we can name it, you know, um. It would be Worden Park Playground, excuse me, Matching Funds for RCO. That's what, you know, we want to do with it. I believe we're gonna have more than that, but we're gonna do something else with the other part. We can, you know, eliminate that too.
Right, we budgeted, we budgeted ninety four thousand of our REIT money for the Worden Project, Worden Park Project, but we're up to. We're over a hundred and ten thousand now, aren't we? In total funds, so we still have, we still have more money in there.
Well, I think that money needs to be designated to, um, repair the jail and repair the canopy that you guys wanna ignore for some reason. On the north side of the jail.
Not sure it can be used for repairs for capital improvement.
Well, that would be an improvement if it was fixed.
I'll figure that out in the summer.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I wanna see that fixed because that, that has totally been left out of everything in the park department.
Yeah, we could, we could.
Jail wasn't even mentioned.
Yeah, we could definitely allocate, you know, the other portion to jail maintenance.
Well, it does need jail maintenance badly and I think that should be on the thing, not only that, but with our city shop and city hall. These things haven't had maintenance in years and years and years. And that REIT fund's been sitting there saving it for Worden Park. Which is okay, but then you can't let the whole city fall apart because of the park.
Any other council input on that or does it sound reasonable? Yeah, and I don't know if you can use REIT on roads.
No.
I, I'm not sure about that. Except it's very, they're very specific on what you can use it for. But that would be another, that would be a good alternative to.
If we could use it for roads, I think that's where.
About how do you tax out? Anyway, all right, well, I think we have some good guidance on, uh, and we can definitely get those suggestions in there. So that was a motion then?
It doesn't have to be a motion tonight.
Okay. Okay, and then so eventually you'll see that in the budget then, in the next budget amendments coming up then. Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, during that, moving on to the next item of city business, council will review the twenty twenty two budget estimates. Dan, let you, let you do your thing.
Okay. Um, we have it in two parts, the first part being expenditures and then also the list. I was excited when I was putting this together because I'm like, okay, I put all the numbers in and I can compare, are we gonna have enough revenue to pay for all this? Spend here within just a couple thousand dollars, so I was excited about that. Um, and so, um, most of the numbers are, we used last year's as a measurement to decide. Are we gonna use the same amount of money this next year? Are we gonna need more? The, um, the estimates are coming in about the population. And, um, we don't have to find a few years ago, but next and then that is what determines how much money we get from the state. They base it on per capita. So that's one question that's not answered. Um. Also, we, we look at, for example, we've got notices from AWC, the membership fee is gonna be a certain amount, so we'll put that in there. Um, the insurance, um, is, is in there as well. We've got the estimates for the insurance for the next year. Um, all of those kind of things are fed into this. Um, also, you have the salary schedule there following these pages. And so from that, we put in all of the line items. For example, my salary comes out of the current fund and then it comes also out of part of the sewer fund. Mine's seventy percent out of current, thirty percent out of sewer. Uh, on the other side, Deputy Burke, seventy, seventy percent comes out of sewer, thirty percent comes out of current fund. And so John's even is more complicated. John's twenty five percent comes from current, twenty five percent from street, and then fifty percent from sewer. So all of those numbers are divided and they have been put into the expenditures when you see those. And, um. But those are pretty detailed in there. Um, we did some things with the grants. Um, you know, last year, we had a grant in the long for this White Park Plant. And so in the middle of the year, Ecology was able to merge those and gave us a forgivable grant. And, excuse me, forgivable loan and grant combination. And so we changed those accounts in here to match them. So you won't see a loan and a grant anymore. It's a merged amount. And if you look at it, it's a deep fat number, four million seven dollars still. That's really exciting. All of them to the sewer plant. Four million two hundred ninety bucks. So. Um, those kind of things have changed. Um, if you look at the ARPA money, we received half of it this year. And then we'll receive the second half in twenty twenty two. So when we look at the revenue, you're gonna see the ninety three thousand for twenty twenty two. But when you look at the expenditures, we're gonna spend twice that much because we haven't spent it this year yet. And there are the time requirements on it. We have to split it by sort of time or turn the money back. And so, you know, the profit will go through, get citizens involved, make, make decisions, but how we want to split that.
Um, and what can you spend that on? Any, anything?
A lot of different things.
That is a whole other discussion.
Or water, building, sewer, we're talking about the Alphonse Station, you know, after the apartment gap. There's also a measurement that you do based on your income prior to twenty twenty. Um, because of COVID, any lost revenue, you can apply that figure to your money. And that can go to improving the town for the citizens. So that could do building sidewalks, putting together whatever. And that's why we want citizens involved, so they can say, hey, I'd like to do this, and we can look at what we can do. It's pretty exciting.
Also, then that would take away from the REIT money going to the jail then, would it?
No. It could be in addition to something like that. Um. It could build an amphitheater in McMurphy Park. I mean, we talked about that. That's exciting. Um, there's a lot of opportunity. The other part I didn't mention with the grants, we also have the one point eight million dollars in the state budget in here that's also designated for wastewater. These are all of that with no effect to citizens' rights or anything like that. Really great. Um, so we're looking really good with that. The tractor along this year's budget. And so again, if we do get to purchase it in twenty twenty one, then that won't stay around the twenty twenty two budget. But again, it hasn't arrived yet. So I don't know where that's gonna fall as far as this pretty, which place. Um. Also, the roofs that we're having done, they're redoing this roof and they're sealing and painting the rod roof. We have the contract out for that, but we don't know the dates when they're gonna do it. Hopefully this year, so that definitely is designated in the same year.
And there's money designated in there for the roof on the jail?
Um, no.
And when is that?
Not in twenty twenty one. You're building the building yourselves, but you put it in twenty twenty two if you want it there. This is the time for you guys to look at. Here's what we are. We'll, we'll set it here, there.
We started with the foundation that's here on the jail. So I didn't see, I didn't see that down in the little here.
Well, it can't wait too much longer, Jason, for the roof. That's in bad shape and that jail needs to be repaired.
It'll be the very.
Should be a priority.
It'll be the very next thing as soon as the building is settled.
Well, it's kind of like the jail, there are three parts that need to be done. Foundation needs to be done, the roof needs to be done, and then we have to replace windows. That will be. And so all of it is kind of stacked on top of each other. If we went ahead and did the windows, then we did the foundation, the windows could crack. The whole little, you know, even the roof, when you fix that and line it up, it may affect it. So waiting for the windows for last. Um, our insurance company's gotta pay for those. Um, and so it's a process. So we're getting the foundation done first, then we'll be able to do the others.
Right, but there's kind of a time limit on how long that jail can wait. It's set there for years now, so.
So we're making a few strides. This is a huge step to getting that done. Again, it's been waiting for a long time. We're gonna see it happen. That's really good. Um, let's see. The other thing on here is loan payments. We have loan payments for past projects that we've done in. That were funded through Ecology. Some through CBVG. Um. Basically, the money from the state comes either through Ecology or through Department of Commerce. And so Commerce is the one that funds the money for CBVG and other kind of projects. There's a old public works, um, loan in here that we're paying on, it came from Commerce, and then everything else comes through Ecology. Exciting thing I'm pointing out about this, we're about to pay off one of those loans at least. Um, and so you'll see that the interest for the whole year is fifty five dollars. So, but again, that will be a line item on the budget again. I believe the principal payment is thousand, let's see, thirty six hundred dollars. So we won't have to worry about that. That frees up that money for something else. That's what's so great about having all these loans for the White Park Plant. We won't have any loan payments for that in the future. So that's very exciting. Looking over, do you guys have a question?
I do. I have a question about the attorney fees again. We've got twelve thousand dollar budgeted and what are we up to now, fifty or sixty thousand?
No.
Oh, we're right on track.
You can see the number right there, but.
Well, that's what it says, but we spent more than fourteen thousand dollars on attorney fees.
Well, so, hold on, let's talk about attorney fees for a second because there's a big question. Donna, you were saying thirty thousand dollars on attorney fees a few months ago, and Joe, you kept saying fifteen thousand dollars on attorney fees. Can you explain where this extra fifteen thousand dollars is now?
Well, I think the fifteen thousand dollars was applied to Castel only. I think there's a lot more. Just last month, it was close to eight thousand dollars. And most of the months before that, it's been around in thirty five hundred dollars. And I honestly have not sat down and added up the attorney fees for this year to date. But it's well beyond any twelve thousand dollars.
If you look at the monthly reconciliations that you get every month, so you should have, well, you know, you should, obviously you don't have October yet, you would have had last month. You can see the total amount that we spent on, on attorney's fees. And you'll remember that we have attorney's fees come out of three or four different line items throughout the budget, correct?
The only ones I'm seeing, and maybe I'm not looking in the right places, but I see, um, the ones here. Attorney fees, you've got budgeted, well, this year fourteen thousand. And then I think there's one for the sewer.
And that, yeah, that would be for general things, so ordinances and things like that, things like that. That's general, general expenses, stuff like that. Um, but then also, you're correct, suit, any sewer related things. For instance, this year, we spent, um, several thousand dollars on sewer related attorney's fees.
Right.
When it comes towards the franchise agreement. No, that was the water franchise. We used sewer stuff towards the grant. Yeah, we had. Which we got reimbursed from the grant. Um, but we have a budget line item for that, so we can spend money on it. Um, we've got code enforcement related, um. Expenses as well. So if you look through there, there's a code enforcement line item. Um, it's seventy five hundred dollars, something like that. Um. And we paid for attorney's fees out of there. And so a lot of the attorney's fees that. That are code enforcement related. All of them would come out of that. And so we're, we're on budget this year as written for all of our attorney's fees.
And the number that you see there, um, we have a bill that we sent to the county to pay for the attorney fees for the Lewis County franchise agreement. That's part of that agreement that's been paid for. And it's forty nine hundred dollars. And then, um, we just received five hundred and sixty dollars back from Lewis County PDC. For putting together the contract for the, um. Urban design standards that they're paying for.
So right, our, our attorney's fees are getting reimbursed to us. Um, some of them are not, like I said, the code enforcement ones, and then of course the, the general.
Well, my concern is every Tom, Dick and Harry that works around here calls the attorney all the time. Well, my concern is every Tom, Dick, and Harry that works around here calls the attorney all the time. Other cities don't allow that to happen. I, this attorney fees this year, or for this one.
There's probably three people that contact the attorney.
Well.
And that would be our, and that would be the.
They don't.
The clerks and myself.
And it should be you or her, but these guys are just calling her up at random. They can, um, you know, that's what we have MRSC for.
And we do use them.
Well, not enough.
But, so we are on, on budget for attorney's fees this year.
My question still stands. Donna, you said, we've spent thirty, I want everybody to know that we've spent thirty thousand dollars fighting Ms. Costello.
I did not say that.
It was a conversation.
It was just a conversation. I did not say that. And like I just told you, I have not sat down and totaled all of that up. I just haven't. It's just my opinion from looking at last year's attorney bill. Listen, it did years, and I see all of these people talking to the attorney. There isn't a city around here that allows that to happen.
So.
And even in the books that the state furnishes us about how to run the city, the only person that should be calling the attorney is our mayor.
Sometimes our clerk needs legal advice for something she's working on.
And obviously the clerk, yes.
And for me to be a middleman on that conversation is ridiculous, but I am copied on it. So I do see all of it, and it's all justified.
Yeah, well, who's Jay Myers? And then we have L. Townsend calling all the time. And, um, of course, there's Pelton she's calling, and then we've got our attorney calling Clay, who, that's the other attorney. I mean.
Well, yeah, some of that is code enforcement related.
Yeah, but these people don't need to be doing that.
Well, a lot of it is initiated by the attorney. They're not calling her. She's calling them, like some of the, um, legislation we're putting together has to do with land use. So she's gonna talk to, um, our planner about that kind of thing. There are, the varieties, um, all that kind of stuff, we have to have information from our building that. So she has been initiating that conversation. And in practice in our office, and we don't contact the attorney unless I either call the mayor, call the mayor, let him know we are initiating this. She calls us and follow-ups about stuff. She's working with Stephanie right now about our shit, um, um, good, our fee schedule.
Well, that's another question I have. Why is an attorney setting our fee schedule?
The attorney.
You guys are supposed to be qualified to do that.
The attorney provides the legal advice to make sure that our fee schedule is in accordance with the law. For instance, there are certain things we can't charge too much for, because if we do, then it's, for instance, like the manufactured homes, for instance. We can't just arbitrarily set a really high fee on manufactured homes because they're a protected class of housing for low income.
Well, isn't that why those people can call other cities and compare and see how they're doing their fee schedules? And do a little research on their own, MRSC, they have all of that in there that can help them.
And we're doing that as well.
I think you call the attorney, calling all around everybody else, how much time are you gonna spend calling around? An hour or two, calling different cities, waiting to get ahold of them and all that, and then let me finish talking, Donna. And then you waste two or three hours of your time when you can call the attorney and say, hey, what about this? And half an hour later, the answer's all done, and it's legit, not just, hey, I called Suzie over here and Johnny over there. No, that's what attorneys are for. That's what we got them for. We're on budget with the attorney.
Well, it's called research, and that's what they get paid to do, and that's what most other clerks around here do. They don't seem to have a problem.
And there's a lot of things that we take care of in City Hall. There's a lot of things that we take care of in City Hall on our own, doing our own research, but then there are certain things that we don't. And that's why you can, that's why the, it's, it is such a short list that you see.
I have to say, this is probably one of the cheapest attorney bills I've seen all year.
We're trying our best.
Twelve hundred dollars.
So we were talking about refunds?
What?
Yeah, refunds.
What were we talking about? We were talking about attorney fees being thirty thousand dollars.
Before that.
And then.
But actually, well.
But actually fifteen thousand dollars and.
Well, have you added them up?
And that thirty thousand dollars then was shared on Facebook. They're spent thirty thousand dollars trying to fight this lawsuit and blah, 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 blah. Have we spent thirty thousand dollars trying to fight this lawsuit? Have we?
I think over the course of the two years that this has been in, in progress, last year and this year, together, I think we're up to about twenty now, correct? We spent about twenty thousand city money to defend ourselves.
Well, this needs to end. It just needs to end it.
And because we did that, we didn't have to pay the seventy thousand dollars that we were sued for.
So end it. There's no reason not to end this.
We did end it, didn't we?
Pardon? What is it? I still see things in there where you got their attorney's memo with Costello.
There is one last piece still lingering that has not yet been dismissed.
Then dismiss it.
It's not my case to dismiss. They sued us. It's their case. If they don't want to fight anymore, they should dismiss.
Well, call, tell them you wanna dismiss.
Yes, Joe, call them and tell them we wanna dismiss. We'll pay you the seventy thousand dollars.
Well, how long are you gonna continue this? What is the point?
Okay, here's the point. This is how the real world works. She sued us, we fight against it. She's got penalties out there.
Who started it?
She's got penalty.
Who started it?
She filed lawsuit against us.
I don't blame her.
Okay, that's why you're her puppet. I understand that.
I'm not her puppet. You watch it now.
Hey, folks.
Okay.
You watch me, you're calling names, mister.
Okay, let's talk about, she sued us for seventy thousand dollars.
Let's start back at the beginning, a couple of years ago.
Oh, okay, when we were in executive session, and she was in executive session, and she said, yes, we want to go after B Street House and rack up as many penalties on it. And then from that point, we will be able to sell it and recoup our money. Every one of us in there.
Who said that?
Judy Costello did. And everyone on the city council voted for that. And then she quits being city councilperson once the fees got high enough on that property.
Oh, this is before she bought it?
You said when the start, yeah, you said when this started.
I'm start, I'm talking about when she bought the house. That's when all of this.
Well, it is.
Stuff started.
We're gonna, no, when it started was when she calculated the fees going up and then approaching the seller to buy it, since they had all these fees up high. And then once she bought it, she came to the city wanting the fees waived. That's when this all started, because we didn't waive all the fees. We waived a lot of fees, but we didn't waive all the fees. So then she was pissed off about that. So then she tries doing screwy things with the permitting process, gets caught doing it.
What was the screwy thing?
There was.
Giving an inspection.
Uh, an inspection that she didn't want, Donna.
What inspection?
There was us.
And what were you getting involved in?
Underlaying, I knew all about.
Are we allowed to talk about this?
We had meetings about it.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
But they, they, they underlayment out the roof and putting the roof shingles on.
I'll be back here.
Well, everybody else in town has done, gotten away with it. Some of them have even done it with, this is what makes me angry at you people. Because you have allowed other people in this community to do the exact same thing. Put a roof on without a permit. They come into the office the next day and say, don't worry about it. Just pay the other eighty-six fifty and off.
Do you know, do you know how many times I've been pulled over and never given a ticket?
I don't care what you've been pulled over for. I'm not talking about you getting pulled over.
I've been pulled over and not gotten a ticket because I was nice and respectful.
All right, folks, so.
So, so let's finish. So, so then.
Move on to the budget.
Yeah, yeah, so the budget back to this thirty thousand dollars. I'd like to really know where this thirty thousand dollars came from.
Ask whoever put it on Facebook, but don't look at me because it wasn't me. You've got that straight?
No, I don't, because it's, it's recorded and you can, you can, we can bring up the thirty thousand dollars.
Bring it up then.
Okay, I just did. I brought it.
Well, let's get the recording out.
The fact of the matter is, the city has, over the course of two years, two different budgets. We've spent about twenty thousand. Now, as luck would have it, the civil penalties against the property in question are still, are still there. And that, at some point, excuse me, folks, at some point in the new, in the near future, um, the city could, um, impose some of those penalties to recoup those costs, so.
Oh, would it make it any better?
I am just saying.
Oh, yeah, we'll get all of our attorney fees paid.
I was trying to give a budget answer to the question about where that money went and where it could come back from. Because that's the way the system is, that's how the system is designed. So, back to the attorney's fees, that's right, you were talking about the attorney's fees, the different places where attorney's fees come from. Um, general fund, sewer fund, and code enforcement are generally the three different places. And, you know, we even, even considering the lawsuit issues, uh, we managed to stay, stay on budget for attorney's fees.
So what does she really budget it for?
What does she really budget it for?
Yeah, because it's definitely, we spent more than twelve thousand dollars.
Right, like it's like, like I said, for instance, on, on code enforcement, I mean, most of that, most of the code enforcement line item went towards one property, unfortunately.
Right, so it was well past our budget.
Correct, yeah, because for instance, like I said, we spent twenty thousand just on the Costello case over the course of two years. So, I mean, there, you look at that number and realize we spent more than, you know, twelve thousand.
And then all of these people that are supposed to be working here are contractors. They're not employees, calling her.
Correct, yeah, so for instance.
These are from, from, from.
For instance, some of our land use ordinances, like Diane mentioned, um, our city planner and our attorney would collaborate, collaborate on that together and to create a more comprehensive legally binding code for us. Um, some of the code enforcement issues, um, the attorney, that where the attorney is involved, the attorney, excuse me, has needed to talk to our building official directly to get the full story for the court case. And so there you will see a phone call between the attorney and the building official, because they gotta get on the same page. So yes, there are some, some cross-talk between these different departments.
But it's every month, though. And it isn't just about Costello. It's about everything else.
Well, for, for like a subdivision, for instance, so recently, and there was a request for a subdivision in the north side of town, where they took a large piece of property, they're gonna subdivide it into four sections, so they're gonna keep one home on one section and have three empty parcels with the idea that they're gonna put another, three other houses on the, on the three new sections. Um, there was a conversation between, I believe there was a conversation between different departments on that, too. Just needs to, needs to happen. Everyone has their own specialty, so there's some cross-talk there.
And they don't know their job?
They each have their own specialty. So when there's some cross-talk.
I'm not going out to when there's a subdivision like that, that it, um, they pay for the outside help, like planners, the attorney fee.
That is a good point. So yes, you'll see that on the, you'll see that on the bill, on our attorney bill, but we're getting rebuilt, reimbursed through their permit fees.
And where does that show in the budget?
On the, on the revenue side.
And so, yeah, if you look at revenue, um, on permits, you'll see that it's gone up significantly over the last couple of years. Yeah, right here, uh, the second page, about a third of the way down, non-business licenses, building permit fee. Um, you can see that we've got, you know, seventeen thousand dollars so far this year alone in building permit fees. You know, where does that money go? That money goes to pay for all the different services that came along with the building permit, whether it's legal advice from the attorney, planner, um, city engineer, whatever. So, but we get reimbursed at full cost for that.
So this new fee schedule is supposed to, um, take care of that?
Yeah, it'll make it even.
The money we're losing.
Right, it'll be, it'll make it even more equitable and will break even even more often. Hopefully have that here very, very soon. It should come, you guys will have it this year.
Yeah, I need to look on page, let me see which one, see the numbers as well. Four, on the revenue, yeah, it's four. Um, we divided it out so that we could be more specific about where the money comes from and where it's going to be racked up together. So we have a line item, building inspection service. And that is for when we have to have an additional inspection done. It's not covered in the regular building permit. So, um, that's the, um, code enforcement is there. We have always had that. Um, then let's go down to where it says planning. We divided that up, planning, if it's just going, subdivision, that kind of thing, that is, um, go to the planner. But then we have building permits planned review by the building official, building permit by the city planner, and building permit planned review by the engineer. So all of those things happen. We're just dividing it up so that we can track what's happening with those permits individually. And you see that on the revenue side, and it's also on the expenditure. So rather than everything just dumping into one bucket, we're making it a little specific so we can look at that.
Okay, well, I'm just, um, so you, you have totaled up all the bills we've received from the engineer this year and, and all of that. And this is basically what we're making off of that?
Yeah, and if you look.
There is anything we're making.
If you look at the, the lines that's tiered right, not begin, that will be twenty-one, what we received. So if you look under the planning, we received seven thousand dollars for planning. We only budgeted five. So we've gotten more than we actually budgeted, um, for the plan review from the building official. We got nine four hundred dollars. We only budgeted seven to five.
But we spent that. We bought those services.
Yes, so it's coming back. And we'll keep tracking it as we go and see if that will change, you know, we'll have to account for that. We'll see how that will come up.
Okay, so this year, are we gonna have quarterly budget reports? Like we're supposed to get?
We can. You get a monthly budget report.
I do, but I, I think we're supposed to have a quarterly one.
In addition to the monthly?
Well, you.
I can do that, if that's what you want, yeah.
Well, it was where the council goes over the budget quarterly.
Okay, you mean like a review, but.
Right, yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
I encourage those monthly reconciliations that you all get, encourage you to thumb through those. You know, those are, those, that's a, you know, a great, you know, way to see where we are throughout the year, um, on, on, on each of those items.
Yeah, but then there's no council discussion about them, you know, discuss.
Feel free, feel free to bring it up whenever you want, you do, so.
That's my job.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I was elected to do.
Did you have any further issues? And we talked about attorney's fees, talked about a couple of other things. Do you have any other thing else on, on the list? You got a lot of yellow stuff in there.
I do. I have to know it's pink. It's colorblind. It's pink.
I know, I don't know why. Oh, your paperclip's yellow. That's why.
No, I did. I marked out a lot of line items that, um, you know, we should be looking at. I just was looking at, you know, that audit this year, are we, is it just the sewer that they're auditing? Because you've got nineteen-five in there for that.
They're auditing us and the city for two kinds of audits. One is the financial audit, so they look at our book. We have to do that. The other is called accountability audit, where they're gonna audit these meetings. Are we doing things we're supposed to be doing procedure-wise? Are we documenting everything? Um, did we, you know, contact this person, this person, all those things? Are we doing those things right? So we're getting that, accountability, and, and federal, yeah, audit for city. So, we're getting that, accountability, I have, and and federal, I have, audit for CDBG. CDBG money that we got. We have to account for all of that.
Okay, so this year, which audit is it gonna be?
All of them.
All of them, all of them, okay.
So, it's thirty eight thousand dollars divided between the current and the sewer.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big amount.
Yeah, last time your audit was in, um, twenty nineteen.
Right.
I don't think it was the entire, the full suite of audits either, it was just.
Was it just the one?
I think it was just just financial, I think. Wasn't the procedures as well.
Yeah. Um, one other point is the RNSA lost control of rent. We get an bid we have blocked with. Last year, nobody ever applied, so we never got the money. So, um, I put a thousand dollars in there, but you have to put in your request before December, before the end of December. Um, and it can be for anything that will help the city be in more in line so there wouldn't be an insurance claim. Paid by our insurance company, RNSA. Uh, in the past, we bought new, um, street signs, you know, which helped our insurance help us because people wouldn't have access. They can see the signs. I think we need to get some more of those done. Um, we had it for some of the stuff, uh, for the streets, like our, um, this cone that we have and, you know, all that. They pay for all kinds of stuff. Doesn't have to be just street things. It could be for us. They pay for training that the clerks do and you guys do, um, because that will help to know that we're doing what we're supposed to do. There's one that blocks it or whatever, so they pay for that. Uh, last year, they spent three hundred and some, almost four hundred dollars for training classes. So, these are there, but you gotta apply. So, I'm handing that back to you there.
I don't do the training classes because they cost money. So, yeah, and I'm not gonna.
The online ones are, they don't cost.
Well, there are some.
Yeah, but most of them are thirty five dollars.
Thirty five dollars, and then there's some, the big ones are like a hundred and forty.
Yeah, right.
And so, as long as I know ahead of time and I can just say, you know, we're gonna take this class, and they'll say, fine, just send the certificate when you complete it, and then they pay us back. But they did that last year for a couple of times, people took on, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can do it.
Wasn't sure whether I could continue, uh, with it because I don't want the city to be paying for it.
Oh, please do, I mean, that's what we have, we have a budget line item for training. That's exactly what it's called.
It's not very much.
Yeah, but your classes are not very much either.
Well, you know, they add up to Diane.
If you wanna, if you wanna put the time.
We have two hundred dollars for council training, that would be like, um, six classes maybe? Do any of the other council members want to take any training?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be some training coming up here, uh, in the new year. Um, you know, part of our insurance rates are based on how trained our elected officials are, and so we'll need to do things like, uh, record requests, training, and oh, what else? There's another big one. Open book meetings is the other big one, so, you know, a lot of people probably taking it.
That, open public meeting doesn't cost, those are kind of required.
That's what I'm saying, is the insurance company, when they calculate our fees, they say, oh, have they done these things? We get deductions off our fees if our council has all trained for the result they can use that. If they've done all this stuff, if the clerks have done certain training, if John has done training, they keep deducting money off our premiums every then we don't get that.
Oh, well.
But it's important to do.
Tell us that, um.
How? So, we'll try to put together like a group training, like a workshop type of deal, we'll come in here, we'll see about, you know, putting it up on the screen, we can all take it together and then just be done instead of having to do it on our own.
What? Were you talking about streetlights? Or was the?
Maybe Randy, I was thinking.
Once in a while, I talk about streetlights.
Were they doing, uh, were they doing an LED swap?
Yeah, they've done like five.
Yeah, they're doing them as they go, so as lights fail, they they put in the LED.
Oh, is that how it is?
That's how they're doing it right now.
And then.
And so are the lights supposed to turn off and on?
I already reported that.
Gold style ones, they get hot and they turn off.
Yep. And as they, as they wear out, they tend to do it more often.
So, we already have a report about tenth.
Well, there's tenth and F, there's F. There's another one down F Street.
Yeah, the ninth is like a strobe light, uh, it's like every minute.
I thought it was just when I drove.
When you drive under it, it turns on.
It seems like that.
Uh, it's on F Street, it's like, uh, halfway down, there's a light pole down there.
That's more than halfway, yeah.
Yeah, and then, uh.
Is that city street light?
Yeah, why are we paying for that? It's not on our street.
No, well, we leave it often. And then on, um, on Tenth Street, over by Alpine Court, that's the one that flashes through the bedroom.
Who don't like a strobe light in their bedroom?
Right?
And it, and they responded pretty quick. I mean, the one, um, it'd be in Seventh was out, and I called them and like, two days later, just.
So, they're swapping them out with?
For LEDs.
Well, then I'll get you a list of relight in the city.
He was a Mike driving around every time it's turned.
There's another one going.
See my BB gun hanging out the window, don't worry about it. I'm just getting us LEDs.
So, is there any other, um, comments on the budget right now? I mean, we're gonna see this a couple, several more times. If you look at the front of your packet here, at the front of the binder, um, we're gonna have this on the agenda a few more times over the next couple of months. Every time you get it, the numbers will be shifted a little bit, you know, as we get closer and closer to the end of the year, we know what twenty twenty two is gonna look like. Closer and closer, you know, so.
Move time.
Yep.
And as you make suggestions, we're gonna, you know, last year, we made, um, you guys really wanted to push for, uh, repairing the tractor, maybe buying a tractor, that was one thing, there were other items. So, we switched all the numbers around, you know, those come and happen. So, think about what you want, talk to people about what they want, and.
John satisfied with everything he wants or needs in equipment for this coming year?
Yes, and we.
Any weirders or?
You know what he wants? He wants a dump trailer.
He should get one.
He wants a dump trailer. Especially with, if you figure he's gonna have his new backhoe, he could dump right, he could dig right into it and then take it someplace and dump it out. So, that, that's on his big one, his big list.
I brought our list from twenty twenty, when we put budgets together for this year, and noted things that we wanted. One was a tractor, we ordered it, it hasn't come. Um, painting the shop roof, um, paint our, the bathroom and the city garage, we got that done for John, so he has the bathroom. And, um, we're gonna look at probably painting the whole garage besides.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty two. Um, and we looked at Word Park Pavilion, we haven't done anything with that yet. The roof was on there, um, and again, we just talked about that, and the foundation. And so, we've got contractor ready to go for the foundation, so that's done. Um, the other thing was paving, and we have plans to put together, Lewis County was gonna do the project, and then they couldn't get the tar or the.
Yeah, this was state grant funded, yeah.
So, we got to lay. Um, and so, we're gonna look at stormwater, that was one thing that we wanted to work on. And so, um, you know, we are doing things, a lot of things are happening. And so, when you put this together, you know, we're gonna work on it.
And, you know, I'm hoping, you know, as these new documents come in through the county on Annanon Road, that we'll have a clearer picture. And we'll know one way, one way or another legally, um, you know, if we can just outright expense city money towards that, towards that road, and if so, then, you know, we could get that on our wish list, too, for twenty twenty two.
So, what about, um, and I brought this up before, um, D Street and E Street being paid from Tenth South?
D and E from.
And D Street is in pretty bad shape. Down, uh, south, south of Ninth.
Okay, D, D south of Ninth, down the hill.
Yeah.
And then.
That's the one out to Dave's, right?
Yeah, and then what was the other one?
Uh, E Street from Tenth down to the park.
Oh, the, um, okay.
Yeah, that's gravel, that should be, I mean, it's been years, yeah.
Yeah, and I was noticing today, Sixth from, well, pretty much the entire stretch from the church all the way over. It's pretty lumpy and it was accumulating water, even a chip seal probably is not gonna be everything at that road.
And when we do talk about doing these, let's talk about doing them like a little bit wider.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll continue, continue to think about your wishlist items.
There's a, just to throw it out there also, I've seen it before, but there's a new, I think it's a newer, um, attachment that would probably work on our tractor, that out the front gives a mower deck that can be moved off to the side, put down in a ditch. And so, he can, he can do the trees down the road, he can do the ditches that they're weed eating all the time, he can take it and just go like this.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so it's kind of a brush hog out on an arm.
That would save hours, so.
Yeah, so.
On the budget, we still have the snow file.
Ask about that, because you have a blade on the tractor.
I don't know.
It'll, it'll, it has the capability of having that attachment still.
Yeah, so if you want to have something, you know, tractor attachment or whatever.
I know a guy that might, might buy in a road scraper. We can, we can outsource it during winter time, that's one day we're gonna get snow.
Right. Well, they said it might be a hard winter, so.
Well, again, continue to think about, um, wishlist items, things that, you know, that could be good, good benefit for the city. Um, and, uh, go ahead and either forward them to City Hall or bring them, bring them to our next talk on the on the budget.
Talked about Tenth Street. Paid too long ago, but if they wanted it, we need to put some kind of slums on it. Ditch, ditch or something, because water come down our road, I have a makeshift.
You weren't there when we paved that road.
No, I know. It, it caused me initial problems with water.
Yeah.
And I put up, uh, my own makeshift rain, uh, French drain to deal with. But, but water rains really hard, it's left it down our road.
Yeah, and we've told some folks before, when we've, we've helped them out, you know, if if there are stormwater issues in the city right of way, like, like that, that's our responsibility, and you know, you talk to City Hall about that, we can get out there, you know, make French drains, things like that, so. You know, on G Street, they're having some big problems up there, the water coming off the, coming off the hill. And, uh, last year, we got a back, a backhoe out there and created a new ditch and stuff, and so. So, yeah, it's part of the budget. Okay, any?
Mine seems to be holding up from now.
Well, if not, make sure you could talk to John, and he'll come up there and knock it out. All right, well, I think we'll move on from this. Once again, any issue, any other, um, things as we get closer towards the end of the year, we'll, we'll fit them in. Keep thinking of those ideas. Any other comments for a move on? Set you off too quick here, no? All right, uh, I remember, last item on the city business, council consider moving its Thursday, November eleventh scheduled meeting, which is Veterans Day. Uh, since it's on a national holiday and City Hall will be closed, uh, so moving the meeting for the day before, Wednesday night at November tenth at six o'clock. How does council feel about that, having a Wednesday night council meeting?
I'm fine with it.
You know, six thirty would work even better.
Six forty five.
Yeah, that's fine.
How does seven AM again?
Wanting to change the city council meeting on November eleventh to November tenth, sixteen.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to move the council meeting from November, November eleventh to November tenth. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Love, lady, any, any other discussion? Very none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Public comment? Yep, you've been waiting, Ken. I don't know what it's about.
Yes, I did, what, what, what heat, I'm only the person. Hi, I'm, uh, Ken Jostner, I live at five twenty two Seventh Street, and I would like to talk to council about the garbage. Uh, two weeks ago, I received a little handwritten note on my bill. I've been here starting next month on the fifteenth, eight years. Um, I went out, I was not happy about when I moved, uh, here, about having to pay for garbage because I gave them pass stock. And I always just ran my garbage into the dump on my errands that I did. Um, but I live here, I moved here, I bought a house here, and so I'm gonna do like what everybody else, uh, per city ordinance of Vator, uh, has to do. So, two weeks ago, I received a handwritten note from this, um, community waste, um, person, garbage man, um, forgot his name.
Jeff.
Jeff, saying that my garbage can that I have had now for eight years, almost, is, and that I pay an additional fee every two months, and my bill is, I've been on time every month, I've not missed a payday, that my garbage cans are no longer gonna be valid, saying that I have to go buy smaller garbage cans because I'm guessing now, uh, he does not want to lift up the garbage cans. So, now I have to go out and buy new garbage cans, and my garbage cans are nice garbage cans, the lids do not fly off, I do not litter. I'm, I'm trying to make them very nice looking, and now he wants me to go spend money out of my pocket and buy new garbage cans, and my old garbage cans, I have no, I'm not gonna be able to use them anymore.
Well, let's say say it's wrong with you, though.
I think it's, they're the wrong size.
It's the weight issue.
It's the weight issue. So, he wants me.
Actually, your garbage cans, it doesn't look indifferent to anybody else. There is, there, there's a lot of us that have too big of a can.
And so, he wants me, he wants me to buy a smaller garbage can, and, uh, she sent me the, uh, emailed me the contract that you guys have with the garbage, contract with the garbage person, and per the, per the contract, it states in there that we're not supposed to be having these extra ones, but my, my problem with the whole thing is, and I don't know how long the contract's been going on, but I know the contract ends this next year, twenty two.
Is it the end of this year?
No, it's next year.
September, next year.
So, why is he making a change when I've been here for eight years? And at the last ye, last year of his contract, why is he making this change now versus why?
Did you, did you say that it's in the, the thing that it says it's supposed to be lower?
It's supposed to be thirty.
So, I think he's just putting this foot down.
I know he is, I know that, but, so, here's my, here's my two things, is I'm, I'm not going to go out and buy a new garbage can. So, I'm, and then this was some other research that I did, um, a couple of years ago, because I was a little bit by, about having to pay for garbage service that I don't think I was getting, I love customer service, and if I'm getting something for my money, I'll pay premium dollar. But by damn, everybody else better be doing the same thing. And he told, I called him up one day, and he says, and I came to a city council meeting a couple of years ago and talked to you guys about this. There is between ten and fifteen percent of the community people here in City of Vator that do not, to this day, do not have garbage service. So, if you make me, city council, abide by this new, that he's going to strongarm me, this, I'm gonna call up on Monday and cancel my service, and I will be part of that ten to fifteen percent of people that will not abide by your city ordinance rule, and I'll just take my garbage to the dump.
Well, that, wouldn't that be code enforcement?
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay, but.
Find you every day.
Okay, Donna, you go get the other ten, fifteen percent of this community, and I'll.
I know it's a problem, yeah.
Okay.
I know it's a problem, I asked Jeff about this once, and it's Jeff's fault because he won't turn these people in.
I know.
You know, so.
But why, why does he have, my cool thing is, why does he have to do this after eight years, and he's got one more year on his contract before this?
Uh, because it's Jeff, that's why.
To me, the only thing that, because I know Jeff pretty good, and I've got a good relationship with him, I think the only difference is, is he's eight years older now.
Yeah.
Well, I.
And those bigger cans.
I understand that, I'm fifty one years. But I don't want to go out, garbage cans are expensive and I don't, no, if I, if somebody could. Take my garbage cans and give me twenty dollars for each garbage can, I'd probably go do it.
I have, I have a question, maybe it's something that, cause my can's oversized too, I got like a forty-five gallon can, maybe it's something that we can. Go to and say, like, put a line on the can, fill it up this high, save us from going buying a new can.
Yeah, that's fine, I didn't even thought about, and just like Mike said about paying premium dollar. I make a good amount of money, I'll even be willing to pay an extra dollar, I, I think I paid three dollars and forty-nine cents extra on top of my. Garbage fees right now, I'll pay an extra dollar just so I don't have to do that. So did you get a handwritten note then?
Not yet, but.
You didn't?
I could, and my, my can usually kind of heavy, so.
I think yours is a small one, Donna.
No, it's, it's bigger, yeah.
So when I moved to town, I went out and bought this ninety ga- the ninety gallon can that. I bought one of those costing a hundred bucks, I put that out there, that lasted one week. And then I had a ninety dollar can that I couldn't use anymore.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm dumbfounded about that, I'm really ticked off as you can tell about it. And I, cause I kinda like the gar- I've gotten used to the garbage service and I really don't wanna. I do drive by the dump every day going to work, so I mean, it's not that big a deal, but. And I have not called him. But I, and I guess if, if you guys say that you guys can't do anything, and I, you probably can't right now or anything like that, but.
It is in the contract, it is in the contract. And so it was, it's like it even says at the bottom of the bill, it says the can size on the bill, so.
Well, I guess I better get a smaller can, I have a couple smaller ones. If Jeff's getting, well, he's got that pretty herky kid though.
He doesn't do it, but I. I know that the kid that, or the, the kid, he's.
He's like my age, yeah, he actually might even be older than me.
Yeah, he uh, there recently, he had some issues, I don't know if it was knee or back or something like that.
I'm sure it's, that's all, and I, it's validated.
So.
Now, point that I, I, my point is that I keep going backwards is, I've been here for eight years.
Should've mentioned it at first.
And you got one more year on your contract, if you really want to make a change. Make that change at the contract and say, come to you guys and say, listen, I got these mean, these people that are, got bigger sizes. And I can't lift this thing, I'm too old to do this, and, and they're just too heavy for me. Is there some way that we can, as a community, figure out how we can adjust that, and that's fine.
I think Jeff's retiring anyway. And we're gonna probably wind up with Lomé.
I hope not.
Me too.
Cause it's gonna quadruple our bills.
I know, yeah, and they're, and they're not nice like.
I, I just want something, now, what do you, like. November first is Monday, so that's basically, he told me, and I got a sticky, you know, sticky note last week saying that this will not be. Accepted November first.
I don't know, I guess if, if it came to me, you know, I probably could dig up fifteen point bucks.
But they're not that much more, they're four hundred forty-five, fifty dollars. And there's the principle, because Donna, I don't, I, you had a strip by my house. Okay, how nice is the house I have? Okay, that's why, I don't keep the lawn this high, I don't have shrubs growing up like this. I got nice looking property and I wanna keep the goddamn thing that way. Because it's part of my house.
You know, it's nice cans, he's got, he's got standard.
You don't want basic cans, you want the nice ones.
I mean, I can, but I.
Yeah, I'm gonna call him too, see if I can just, I don't know, draw the line, spray paint line around where, where he wants me to build it up to. As uh, yeah. We're in the same boat, we're in the same boat.
Yeah, that would be a, a good compromise, I mean, he, he should realize that having everyone buy new cans is kind of ridiculous. Um because then, how are you gonna throw away your old can, cause it's too big?
You know, and you kind of have to look at it from Jeff's perspective too, because he has put up with a lot of stuff in this community. He doesn't complain about that kind of stuff, he lets people get away with stuff, he goes out of his way sometimes to help. Old ladies get their garbage done, you know, and, and I think kind of a little bit, some of us are spoiled. And Jeff never goes out of his way to file the complaint with the office like he should. For people not having their trash picked up, but that's on him.
Can we ask him for a glass?
We have a, a, a folks that haven't paid, yeah, we've tried to do that in the past and his um. Record keeping is.
But it would be nice for us if everyone had, because there were some people down E Street that burned their trash. You'll see black smoke, that is.
There's a no burning, there's no burning in the city. As far as the, the garbage is concerned, you know, part of that, our garbage ordinance says that all citizens must have garbage service. And if you gotta go way back in the history before, before I was even involved, it wasn't that long ago, but. Um yeah, that came out of the fact that the city did not yet have code enforcement ability. And so they thought that, alright, if we mandate garbage service, folks would have to get it, therefore they would use it. And therefore, there wouldn't be piles of garbage everywhere. And so, so that's where it came from.
Also, they used to build all the utilities together.
Then you give everybody.
Why don't we do that anymore?
So I don't know, they stopped. Can't stop that.
Garbage service didn't it to. Maybe if Jeff's leaving, we can buy his truck and we can.
Jason just volunteered to drive the garbage truck.
Well, that would be an interesting.
Idea.
An interesting idea would be to include garbage as a city utility.
It used to be.
And then you would pay it along with everything else.
Right, and then, you know, having the water you would have to trawl over if they didn't.
And then everyone would definitely pay.
Right, and then clerks would have.
Once again, we are stuck in this contract for another year. It'd be interesting, but, and let me know if you guys don't get any resolution, I, I, the, the idea of just not filling the can. All the way seems like a reasonable. I got one for it. And it's not in my budget? For a can, yes, okay.
I like your budget, I'm already digging it, cause if you don't have room for a can, I need your budgeting rate tight and secure. I like it.
He's been really fair.
If you give him a call, let him know that he kinda. Kind of the council is hearing kind of the sympathy of the citizens about this.
So, but Jeff has the contract and, you know, if, we have to abide by the contract, so, you know.
But he hasn't been doing it by, by the contract for many years.
We'll see, we'll see, he's a pretty reasonable guy overall.
He, and that's the problem, he's too reasonable and.
I think that this will be a compromise, he'll be willing to accept if he has a verbal agreement. Verbal agreement with the citizens that are not filling their can.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if Jeff, and I think I heard he is going to retire at the end of this contract, so we're gonna wind up probably with Lomé.
I think we should, I like that idea, I think we get the gar- get a garbage can, or truck, can. Truck and do our own service.
Hire somebody to do the thing? It'll pay for it.
What I, what I dislike about our current situation is there's no recycle, there's no recycle.
Recycling would be nice and yard waste.
But recycling's big.
Hate to out my soul saying I'm from California and we always have recycling, but we always have recycling, so it's weird to me that we don't have.
I'm not sure, he won't, his truck, I think he's had it under repair some time.
But could we use REIT something for it? Something for it, I don't know what we could use for it.
Any other public comment? The one last public that it is.
Ken dropped the mic and left, huh?
Yeah, he's done. He wakes up at like three, four, he leaves on thirty minutes.
Any other, any elected official comments?
Yeah. You know, mightn't, well, go for it, I wanna know why you are. Decided that you are gonna put Park Road in around Mike's property.
Oh my gosh.
I didn't decide, I just applied for a grant so that it could be a possibility. Obviously, council could, well, I, if you remember, I came to council with handouts. And I had all the roads printed out and I said, what did you think? You all were like, yeah, go for it, I'll put it in for a grant.
No, I never said go for it, it was just suggested by you, and there was nothing solid about it. So I don't see that, no fish to you, Mike.
I, I agree with you, Donna, I don't want it, in fact, I think that the city should abandon it and let me have it. Cause it's all my property anyway, the whole thing.
So, so it was, it was just a suggestion, I, I put in for a grant among a few different roads. That was just one of several different roads.
There's T Street. That really need to be repaired.
There are, there is a grant for creating roads that don't exist right now, which that is part of it, there is a separate grant. Unrelated to that grant, for fixing every other road that currently exists in town.
Won't take down one.
So there are separate grant opportunities, one does not make you less likely to get the other one.
Right, but.
And if we get it, we still don't have to use it, if council, majority of the council says, let's not cut those trees down and put it apart, or a road on. To bring park around, we won't do it.
You don't need it.
Look, it's a long shot we don't get those.
E Street, if you pave E Street, you go down around corner to park, then you've got the road paved for the park.
I s- I say.
That park was donated to us in like nineteen fifteen or eighteen, and when the park was in use, nobody had a problem going down there. And turning their car around and coming back out E Street, it's easy, I come back the car around and turn it, it's not.
So, so there is no active plan, other than I put in for a grant to do a variety of roads on the north and the south side of town. And that was just one of them.
Okay, cause I can tell you, if I was sitting out in that audience just as a person, and I'm looking at Mike Parsons and the only road. Only thing that road is gonna serve is Mike's property.
It is not serving my property.
If you'll just back up, I'm just telling you what it looks like, Mike, I said, it's nothing personal. It's just, what would you think if he wanted to put a road around my property, who would it serve? It doesn't serve anybody, and it certainly doesn't serve Mike, and I don't think the.
I honestly, no offense, didn't even take Mike into consideration when I thought of it, as I stare at. As I stare at the maps, as I sat, as I stare at the city maps, like I do because I like maps. I saw this, and it looked like a great logical continuation of the, of the road, right? It eliminates a dead end, brings it all the way around, and if it had got paved and created, it would, it would also solve the issue we have. It would also take care of the extra pavement issue where people can't get through there, cause it could go around, would solve a few different issues for the city. And so I thought, now, let's put it.
Well, I think, are we still on elected comments?
It, it is still, do you have any, anything else, I mean, that's my, that's my answer to it.
No, that was the, that was the elected official comment.
So I think that we ought to abandon that road altogether, because it doesn't go anywhere or do anything. And um either that, or the city needs to come in and. Take down a bunch of trees, because I've got a list of trees all in that, the only. Bad part of my property so far is that strip, and there are trees leaning onto other trees, which is a liability. But I can take care of it if we just get rid of that easement.
So you're saying the city should vacate that?
No, it's my property.
No, it's not.
Actually.
No, it's not, it's a dedicated road for the city.
Well, that's the suggestion, that the city would vacate it, and then, and then he would then.
Then he could really.
Take care of.
And I should maintain it, cause it was, it was a part of my parcel before it was. It was, the whole thing was get, taken out of my piece of property.
You're not having it with the other folks.
I'm not having it with the other folks, it's all, it's all off of that property.
That's where it came from.
Yeah, and that's, I had it all surveyed, I know exactly what it is, and I. Don't want a road there. So just vacate it, that would be the best thing to do, then it'll make Donna happy too. What's that?
Un, unused right of course. It's, it's a city right of way with trees and no road.
Running into E Street so people can get down to park.
Working on that as far as a grant too, that would be the more beneficial one for the city.
You could go up, um you could do the lower part of park. The lower part of park and take it straight up to um. Alpine Court, to the back of Alpine Court.
That's what I have, what would it serve, it, nothing. Except make people be able to go all the way around, that's why that road got blocked off to begin with. Because Enchanted Valley over there used to use it for a drag racing thing to come through Vader, and so they finally put the barrier up to stop it. But it used to be, when the park was still in down there, a beautiful farm down through there. But now all those people, do they own that property or are they still just hanging out there?
Uh well, the road is still owned by the same, either the city or the county. The road has had not been vacated, they own, there's private residences on both sides of the road. There was a manufactured home on the Enchanted Valley side.
It's a trailer, good fifth wheel.
Yeah, but was it permitted to go there, that's what I'm talking about.
It's county, it's not city.
So who owns that property though, are the people that are just the homeless, they're like. Yeah.
Zach, Zach has all of his garbage out on the road.
There's, yeah, the parcel there.
That's the guy that goes by with the booming music.
Oh.
Yeah, there's, there's, on the county side, Enchanted Valley, I believe um the gentleman's um. Family lives in the one home, but they have, I'm not sure, I can't remember if it's an adjoining parcel or if it's, 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 it's the same parcel, it just comes up. Um and he's, he's, he hangs out there on that, on their, their land. And he uses then the Vader Road to access it, cause he's just this side of the barrier there.
Well, I've always wondered about that, RV sitting down there where there, there'll be no holding tanks. Where is that going, there's no sewer down there.
In Enchanted Valley?
No, I mean, right across the barrier on Park Road there. That old trailer's been, oh, RV and everything has been down there for years, and they just pulled it in there and parked, and then there was a um makeshift shed. On kind of where that lady has her property there, where the road ends at the barrier. People lived in that for years and had little RV trailers sitting in there and. You know, nobody in the city ever did anything about where they're dumping those tanks back.
There is, I believe that there's raw sewage going on the ground or into the stormwater or something, that's definitely a public health issue.
All the city properties are.
Yeah, so. Pardon? The county will help us with that kind of stuff, they're great, so.
Yeah, they're pretty quick.
Somebody has to say something, right?
So it's gotta be something that we can just call county then and say, hey, we got this. So it's gotta be something that we can just call county then and say, hey, we got this property.
Because that little stream runs down through there, that water.
Yeah. I mean, if you believe that there's that issue, I mean, the reason why we haven't called is because we haven't been hanging out down there noticing the person's trailer.
You guys had issues. I had issues with the guy, but I can't say that I have any knowledge of what the sewer is or is not doing.
Right.
That's his mom's place there. There is actually, since we're talking about that same area, his mom's house is here. And the road goes up this way into Vader Park, right? There's the barricade here. Zach's there. And then on Park Street the other way, this guy moved in over there. And there's probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred bicycles, motorcycles. There's multiple storage ca, storage containers there. There's.
North east of the barricade.
I am talking my backside of my pro, actually about fifteen to twenty feet of all of his crap is on my property also.
This would be, the access would be to, we'd be off F then.
Access to it is through Enchanted Valley. It's the backside.
Corner before you get, right before you get from Enchanted Valley, up the corner before you get to the.
Yes, like if you're coming up to the barricade, he put a fence across the road right there. And he's just started dumping. When he first started coming up there, he was cleaning it up. And he said that he was gonna bring his kid up to do camping every now and then, and it's county. And I'm like, oh, that's cool. Make sure you know where the property line is. And, and then all of a sudden there's just, it's just a dump down there. And he lives in Portland. So.
Well, you told the right guy about it.
Right.
Coming up from Enchanted Valley.
Yep.
There literally there's like one house on that little road and that's the fifth wheel you're talking about.
Yeah.
He's been there for a year. Yeah.
The fifth wheel has. The other one was.
And the back way turned around my corner because like the last time I did it, I don't remember any of that, so.
Yeah, he's got a, he's got a fence going across the road. Like if you, if you pull up, the trailer's on your left-hand side and if you look to your right, there's now a fence right there. And he put in a little driveway right there and, but.
Thank you for that report. Any other elected official comment? Very good. Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-four PM.